Yeah, okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. This is a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen from the town of Halifax and the town of Plimpton, and we are here to discuss the possibility of shared services for our fire department. I'm just going to start with just a brief overview of how we got here in the room. And I want everybody to know that this is just the beginning stages of a project of looking at whether or not this would work for both communities. So, in November of 2016, we were invited to Plimpton to a Board of Selectmen's meeting to discuss some possibilities of some shared services. We had been asked ahead of time to come up with a couple of different possibilities that we could perhaps provide for the town of Plimpton. We met for about an hour, hour and a half. At that time, we also discussed other positions that we could potentially share. And then we were going to loop back with Plimpton when they were ready to pursue whatever they were going to pursue. So, in, I think it was the spring and summer of last year, you engaged with MRI on a fire study. I know that a couple of us were interviewed during that time for your study. And then in January, I believe, of this year, or February, it's all blurred together, we were told that there was an interest in just looking at shared services. So at that point, there was a grant available at the state to be able to get different components that may assist us in looking at this particular area. Our fire chief wrote a grant. I know that you had written a grant, that town of Plimpton had written a grant. And we were lucky enough to get that grant. So then we sort of sat still until March, when we were told that you were interested in just looking at it. And so, we have a committee, and we have had a committee for about 10 years for the town of Halifax called the Fire Study Committee. We first started our fire committee when we were not a 24/7 department. And we spent some months looking at our department, trying to figure out how we could provide a better service for our residents, because we were a call department from 6:00 PM until 6:00 AM in the morning and on weekends. So we wanted to be able to provide a better service for our town, and we were also engaging in becoming an ALS provider. So before that, we were just a BLS provider. So, as a result of that, we had done some financial analysis, and we came up with a dollar amount that would support a full-time department. We went to town meeting, presented it, and it was supported by our residents. We tend to get our, I call the band back together, our fire study back together every few years to sort of look at different ways of improving our service, or looking at ways that we can retain staff. And so, from time to time, we reconvene, and I think it was about two years ago, we got back together again, and we looked at the retention of staff and how we could provide a better service for our residents, because we were finding that, as in a small community, when you're just staffing with two firefighters, that, you know, we wanted to be able to do a better job of engaging our call department. So the fire study got back together, and we did a study, and we then made a proposal to add a third position by using ambulance fees, by increasing our fees for ambulance fees. And that has been a wonderful decision for our town to do. We've engaged our call department. We have shifts that are being filled. We have people engaged in training. And so, we come to you from the town of Halifax with a very healthy, proud fire department. But we also want to let you know that we have not always had the perfect fire department, and so that we have learned over the years what has worked for us and what has not. So when we go through these slides, I want you to understand that, you know, it's been years in the making that we are where we are, under a great leadership of Chief Averos, certainly he has assisted us in that. And so, we reconvened our fire study, and we have met three times. So we're kind of at a standstill, and we're going to do a presentation about what we've kind of learned. And we recognize that your town has recently convened your fire study. And so I know that you have this report done, and I figured we're going to have time to discuss through slides. So we're not going to bore you completely with the slides, so we'll have an opportunity to have interaction between us. But I just wanted to sort of set up where we are. You know, why does it make sense for Halifax to look at this? Because, you know, as I stated, we're very, very happy with the service that we're providing our residents at this time. We're very proud of our call times and the quality of our firefighters. We're very proud of that. And so, what makes sense for us for looking at a shared service is that the one area that we're really struggling with is retention of full-time staff, because we are not able to pay a rate that would retain them. So what we're finding, and it's very true with most small communities, is that you train them, they work with you while, and then another community may steal them. So we certainly have had that. I know you have had that. And so, why are we looking at this? We think that we can improve the quality that we band together. As a town, we can provide a better service. We certainly don't think that we're going to save a lot of money. And we think that we can improve our retention and maybe improve, not so much our response time, because I think we're pretty proud of our response time, but just have more people to rely on and resources to rely on for second or third calls. And so, where we're at now is we have this grant. I know our fire chief has reached out to your people about sharing some training resources, and we can talk about that afterwards. I don't know that we've received a reply on coordinating that yet. But, you know, I think that we can look at it. I think the plan is that we will continue our fire study. I know that you're freshly starting yours. At some point, if it looks like it's the direction that we all want to go in, I foresee those two committees forming together. And obviously, we want to get a pulse of our own residents. So before we would go any further after that, we would do a series of public forums to see how our residents would feel about this particular pursuit. But before we do that, we want to have tangible numbers and a plan before we do a public forum, so that we know that it's certainly something that is a positive thing for our community as well as yours. I know that when we met back in November of 2016, we talked about three different options. And I think that we left that meeting knowing that you would want to have a station manned 100% in your community, and we support that. We would not feel comfortable responding to your community just from our single station. So what we have done at the Fire Study Committee is that we've done our recommendations, or we're looking at our particular area of that third option, which is keeping both stations manned at all times. And so, as we go through the slides, we can get into the detail of the things that we looked at. But I think we should probably do introductions. I forgot to do that. So, I know we all know each other, but I know that there are... Hi, Tom. I know that we have members from our Fire Study Committee, and I know you have members from your Fire Study Committee. So what we could do is go around the table, so everybody knows who we are, and then I can introduce the Halifax Fire Study Committee, or have them stand up, and then you can do Plimpton. Okay. All right. So do you want to do your statement before we do introduction?
Actually, before you do your statement, I want to call our meeting to order, because we have a post meeting here. So I'll call the November 20, April, I'm sorry, April 25th meeting of the Plimpton Board of Selectmen to order.
Second.
All right. So do you want to do your intros?
Sure. Let me introduce some of the people that are here, though. We have the Town Administrator, Elizabeth Dennehy.
Hi.
We have our Town Accountant, Barbara Gomez.
Hi.
We have the interim Fire Chief, Bill Carr. A firefighter, Andrew Norton, who is also on the Oversight Committee that we put in what you call your Fire Committee.
Jim Mulcahy, who's Highway Supervisor, but a retired fire captain for 25 years, also on our Oversight Committee.
Who am I missing?
Steve Heath, back there, experienced firefighter. John?
Sure.
I never can say your name right. That's why I was... Who's our, one of the firefighters, Fire Clerk.
I think I picked up everybody.
Yeah.
So I'm John Trainor, Plimpton Selectman.
I'm Mark Russo, Plimpton Selectman.
I'm Christine Joy, Plimpton Selectman.
Kim Roy, Halifax Selectman.
Tom Elias, Halifax Selectman.
And last but not least, Troy Gare, and Halifax Selectman.
And so I'm going to point out a couple of our members of our...
Sure.
We have a couple of people that are missing from our fire study. John Pisa couldn't be here, and Len will be here shortly.
Let me introduce one member of the Fire Committee. This is Rick Jordan, Vice President of Operations for Cisco.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Wherever there's a chair, Rick.
So Len couldn't be, he's on his way. He is the mastermind behind the PowerPoint presentation. We have Tom Hall, who is a firefighter, a resident and Halifax firefighter in Pembroke, and also a part-time police officer for the town of Halifax. We have, obviously, our Chief Averos is here, and we have Melinda, do you want to see him up? A member of our Finance Committee and a member of the Fire Study Committee. And as I said to you earlier, I'm a member of the Fire Study, and we're missing John Pisa, who was a former member of our Finance Committee. Len is also on our Capital Planning Committee, and soon will be going on our Finance Committee, although he doesn't know yet. And I can say that, because he's not here.
You can point him out.
Be quiet when he comes in. And I do also want to point out Charlie Seeling, who is our Town Administrator. So I know you're going to...
Okay, so we had a study done by Municipal Resources, Inc., back in the fall, early winter, because we had concerns about the fire department. And I think as a result of that study, it came up with a number of recommendations, kind of opened our eyes to maybe some things that we were thinking about but hadn't really addressed. So we formed two committees. We formed what we're calling a Fire Technical Committee, which is composed of the firefighters to go through, there's some 50-odd recommendations that MRI came forward, and rank them in terms of importance, so we can start addressing them. At the same time, we gathered an Oversight Committee, people who have an interest in, at the town level, like Rick Jordan from Cisco. You know, we have Cisco and Hubble that have major concerns about how they're going to be addressed if there's any sort of a problem. Based on that, we've just started. We're kind of in infant steps, in a way. I did put together some initial thoughts. We met for the first time last Wednesday, and these are my thoughts, not necessarily everybody's yet, but, one, we want to maintain ALS service. We want the advanced life support. Two, that we want to staff the Plimpton Station 24 by 7. That training and certification is really a priority, something that we've been sort of weak at in terms of making sure that it was all, all the Ts, I, and the Is were done. We also want to recognize that we've got a revenue risk, and I think it's the same as you, that we're billing at 300% of Medicare. And the insurance company, as you know, have tried to stop that. They lost this time, but I'm sure they're going to be back, and there's a good chance that that could get reduced, and that would have a major impact on our cost structure. Ability to attract on-call firefighters from within the town, or close enough so that it's not a problem. We have on-call now, but some of them come from a fair distance. We want to make sure that what we capture for data is correct, because one of the things that came out of the report was that maybe some of the response times that we were looking at weren't quite as impressive as we thought. I don't know if that's true or not yet, but we need to address that. And then it's got to be financially stable. We right now have a budget, as we go into next year, around $670,000. That's gross. We have about $200,000 of revenue coming in, of which we take $50,000 and kind of pocket, because we're going to need a new ambulance, so we build it up, a fund over time.
Okay.
I think that 150 is at risk by maybe 50%.
So you don't use, I know that you, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
I know that a certain amount of your revenue goes into a stabilization account for your capital item, so that is not used for the fire department.
That's not the ambulance piece.
Okay. So you keep that separate.
That's completely separate. We take 35% of the industrial revenue taxes.
Okay.
And park that in the capital, but it has nothing to do with fire per se.
Okay. All right.
So that's where we're starting out from. We also have a building that's questionable in terms of, when the consultants looked at it, they said, you know, "You need to be thinking about this. You've got some problems here." We're right in the middle of starting off with a police department. We're putting a brand-new building there that's actually just started under construction. So a fire building would be a major impact, and whether or not we can afford it, we'll have to see as we go forward. But first, we want to make sure that we've got a plan for the next three to five years longer that operationally makes sense for everybody, for the residents, for the firefighters, for anybody that we're touching on, the businesses, and that's where we're starting out. And I think you people are a fair step ahead of us, and we can learn from you.
Thank you. Well, I think that, again, as I stated earlier, we, you know, we definitely have spent a lot of time engaged with the process, because we weren't always where we are today. I would say, you know, 10 years ago, we would not even think about being able to offer a service. But I know you know this, it goes without saying, but we are, no matter what happens, if we're going to engage in a service, you know, we are 100% committed to responding to your residents as if they're our own. And so that's really important for everybody to know, that, you know, there are no boundaries when it comes to fire safety or ambulance service. So we are 100% committed, and again, I want to point out that when we brought up a couple options, or we talked a little bit about last year, about the different options, you know, we don't feel comfortable providing a service until we know for sure that we could do an outstanding job for you, because we don't ever want to provide anything but the best job that we can. So with that, I think that it would be helpful for us to sort of just go through the slides. We're going to take pause to be able to discuss some of them, so I don't want you to think that we have to save our questions for the end. This is also the first time that Tom and Troy are going to be saying this. Again, I serve on the Fire Study Committee, so I'm pretty familiar with the data, but it's for all of us to sort of discuss and ask questions. So I'm actually going to ask Chief Averos, would you start with... Thank you.
Great.
Yeah.
Sure.
So we've done that.
So our general, we're just going to talk about introductions, we kind of got through already.
Yeah.
Expected benefits and acknowledgement, our views of shared service, and our view of, at least what we view as shared service, and then discussion and next steps. Introductions, I think we went through that already. Kim provided us a good recap of how we got where we are today, starting with November of 2016. We were invited to a joint meeting that Plimpton Board of Selectmen to discuss shared service. And as you said earlier, that's evolved to where we are tonight.
Thanks. Okay.
So expected benefits and acknowledgements. What we would expect if we were to work together in a shared service department, the service improvements, we'd have a larger staffing pool of individuals, increased emergency availability, faster response times, and increased personal experience levels. So largest, increased emergency availability. For example, if there was an accident in one town, we now have two stations that are staffed, and vehicles out of both stations can respond. So right now in Halifax, we have three people working. One goes with the ambulance, uh, one goes with the engine to go with the ambulance. If we were to combine, and there was an accident in either town, we would be able to get two ambulances on the road. Where now, you know, most of the time when there's a car accident, we have more than one person will bring to the hospital, so we're recalling staff to do that. We'd have that second ambulance already staffed and immediately ready to respond, regardless of what community it is. And for Plimpton, we would have an engine on the road if there was a car accident, which is some things that they're not able, what you're not able to do now, is have that, those vehicles immediately staffed. With that, we expect to see some faster response times, being run as one land area, based on mutual aid will be built in. We'll have that second ambulance staffed, ready to go. We do a callback system, where every time our ambulance goes out, we recall firefighters to staff the station, and we would continue to do that in a shared service model. Benefits, opportunities for advancement. Obviously, in a larger department, people have more opportunities. We see some retention problems because of that. People just want to be affiliated with a larger fire department. They have more opportunities to go on, exposure to calls, really important for firefighters. They do a lot of training. They want to be able to put those skills to use. In small departments, we don't have fires every day. We don't have big car accidents every single day. So when we increase the size of the department, those individuals will have more opportunities to be able to respond to those types of incidents and put their skills to use. Potential for more competitive salaries, that's one of the things, as we go through, that our committee has built into the plan that we've worked up, is taking into account the salary level. So while we don't have an actual number that we're going to provide, that is part of our plan, is paying the employees who work for us competitively. So we've done some salary surveys of area towns, using comparison towns, and any model we present would include, try and pay our employees more competitively.
Chief, could I just stop you for a second?
Sure.
I wanted to just touch a point. I know we're going to discuss this later, but the opportunity for advancement, and that means officers. And I want you to know that we have a standard of any kind of promotion. It is a rigorous test, and certain standards that one receives before they are ever promoted to an officer position. So you know when somebody carries that title, they have been vetted, put through, you know, a pretty rigorous process. So I just want you to be aware of the talent that we have, and we will provide when it's combined.
And we hope that this would lower our turn, increase our retention rate of employees, lower turnover. Like we said, we're kind of factoring in a lot of the reasons why people leave. So our hope, and one of the things that Halifax is looking for, is to be able to keep that staff. It's great that we have people on fire trucks, but if they don't have any experience, it's this, you know, we need to have experienced firefighters on the trucks. So just being able to put people on the trucks, because they got their certification yesterday, and we lose them next week, we're getting out to the emergencies, but we're not handling them the way we necessarily could be if we had more experienced staff.
And that's for the safety of not only our residents, but also the safety of our employees. They want to know that they have somebody that's going into a situation that has experience. So that's a huge benefit for retention of staff.
And then economies of scale. Obviously, it would be a larger department, there's some serious opportunities for cost avoidance down the road, and most of these mergers or shared service things, that's where we see the savings is in future, avoiding future costs, more training opportunities, increasing purchasing power, and sharing equipment. I know that, you know, if this was something we were to do, we can look at equipment and say, "We don't need five fire trucks. We don't need, you know, so many staff cars. We can reduce the amount of equipment we need." Right now, we run two fire departments, and they all pretty much need the exact same equipment. So if we were to pair that down, there would be a savings there. Acknowledgements that no immediate cost savings expected. We did do some projections, and the cost is within range of what we spend, what the towns spend now to be able to do it. Joint funding structure will need to be developed and agreed upon, funding structure. Capital items, we, our committee has talked about capital items, but we don't really have necessarily a plan at this point, starting out as an intermunicipal agreement with an opt-out option after a set period of time. The thought of, the Halifax Committee at least, was that something like this should start out as maybe a five-year intermunicipal agreement, where after four years, if Plimpton wants to go separate ways, or if Halifax wants to go separate ways, we could look at, we could do that, they could do that. And then in the future, if after five years this plan was to work out, something that both communities really believe in and want to create a district, it's something that we can, you know, that's an act of legislature, but it could certainly happen sometime in the future. But the recommendation of our committee at this point was to start out possibly as a five-year intermunicipal agreement with an opt-out option.
Thank you, Chief. Do you want, should we just go?
Yeah, sure.
Any questions so far?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay. So we just did some mapping on the left-hand side, just so people can visualize it. We put the two towns together, and we just erased on the top picture, and then on the bottom picture, we erased the line in the middle. And that's how basically we would run, is as one fire department. On the right-hand side, it's what we would look like on a daily basis under our proposed model. We would have one fire chief, one deputy chief, and more than likely that, certainly that person would be in Halifax as the headquarters fire station, and then, and we would continue to staff the Halifax fire station with a captain, a firefighter, paramedic, and one firefighter. And the Plimpton station, ideally, would have one lieutenant, paramedic, and a firefighter, and that could be their paramedic or an EMT. ALS ambulance requires one paramedic to be on the ambulance. So even in Halifax, sometimes, that, most of the time, that's what we have, one paramedic on the ambulance, and then one as a backup. There would always be a group of on-call individuals that we use. We use our on-call department now. We use them the same way. Obviously, if it was a large incident, we would call them all back. Smaller incidents, we cover the station. So for example, if an ambulance goes out of Plimpton, we would recall two people to cover Plimpton. If an ambulance goes out of Halifax, we would recall two firefighters to cover Halifax. And we've been, in Halifax, we've been very successful with that, probably 70% of the time, where we're getting people to come back just for those two-hour blocks. But our mutual aid numbers have gone down dramatically since we've done that, because we have that second ambulance ready to go. We're not losing revenue to mutual aid anymore, and there's some great benefits. Our response time's lowered by a minute just by using recall people to come back, because now we have that second ambulance. It's going out the door instead of waiting for someone to drive from their house to the fire station and then to the emergency scene. So it's been, it's worked out very well for us. So if we just put some statistics at the bottom, it would be a 32.5 square mile area that would be covering, and a population around 10,000, 30 feet. Any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question. So the plan would be, you have one labor pool, basically.
Yes.
And you're either, you'd need to be assigned in Halifax or Plimpton, doesn't necessarily mean...
It would rotate.
Okay, it'd rotate.
Yep.
And then the on-call group would be from both communities, or the whole group, and you'd be assigned to go to either town, depending on where the need was.
Correct.
Okay. So it's basically just one labor pool?
Yeah.
That you would be scheduling?
Yes.
Yes. And we would want to assign, you know, the captain generally, in most systems, the captain works out of headquarters, and the lieutenant works out of a substation. Ideally, that would pretty much stay the same, although we could swap them out from time to time, just so they get more exposure. And the firefighters, we would always rotate on, you know, monthly. They'd spend a month in Halifax, spend a month in Plimpton, and just rotate around so that they're getting exposed to that. And one thing that would be different, the captain as the shift commander, if there was a medical call in Halifax, if any call, the captain responds on. So the captain would continue to, if there was an ambulance call in Plimpton, the captain would still respond out of here to Plimpton as that third person. And, you know, it's really important, especially on medicals, having that third set of hands. Cardiac arrest makes such a difference, but even someone, somebody that's carrying, going out to the ambulance and bringing the equipment in, has made a huge difference by having that third person available. Then the officer would come back, or, and we would backfill with two additional people. On-call group, I think if the departments could be as large, we're going to show you in the next slide, we'd want to break up those groups. Instead of just having, say, everyone's on-call all the time, we could assign some set times. So certain firefighters would be assigned to certain groups, and that way they could kind of schedule their time and know, "Hey, I'm on-call on Monday night this week and Wednesday night, and next week, I'm, you know, have their schedule a little more set." Major incidents, we'd still do full department recall.
Yep. Thank you. Next.
Any other questions on that? Yep, next. So what our full organizational chart, that kind of breaks down what our full organizational chart would look like, one fire chief, we have a chaplain administrative assistant now. We would be adding a full-time deputy chief. We do not have that now. We do not have that now, but as we get bigger, it's important, especially in fire prevention. I can speak for Halifax and I'm not going to speak for Plumpton, but my guess would be it's the same. It's very difficult to have a real good fire prevention and inspection program when you only have the chief who does it or you have officers doing, you know, your regular inspections. It's good to have someone dedicated in that role that can follow up on issue, ongoing issues and I think as we grow, that would be really important and we built, we did build that into our plan. And then we have four groups of firefighters. Like I said in the previous slide, each one has a captain, a lieutenant, and then a series of firefighter, paramedics, and EMTs who are assigned to their group. We'd like to, if we were to do this, we would plot them out geographically and try to get a mix of where people live, have a mixture on each group of people living around the area. We have firefighters now, for example, that live in Carver. So, you know, if we have two, three, three or four of them that live in Carver or Middleborough, we'd want to make sure they're kind of split up on the group so they would have more availability for Plumpton. Obviously, the people we take over from Plumpton, we just want to have a good mix of people so we're covering the area.
Do you have a breakdown of the responsibilities between the fire chief and the deputy chief?
Not at this point.
Not at this, but I mean, it's pretty standard. The fire chief oversees everything. I think in this scenario, one of the main responsibilities of the deputy chief would be fire prevention, inspections would be his primary responsibility. However, he would be here in the event of the fire chief's absence. So you'd have two chief officers who are available, be able to swap off weekends so you always have one chief officer who is available to respond to an incident.
I guess my question would be around, it's not a very flat organization, you know, when you've got the fire chief, two, the deputy chief, and then four groups reporting. I'd like to know more about what the actual responsibilities are because on the chart, it looks like it's a little too hierarchical.
Well, the captains and lieutenants are responsible for the firefighters that work under them. They make sure that they have their, you know, doing their weekly trainings. They supervise smaller incidents and then they would report back mainly to the fire chief, like I said, but the deputy fire chief obviously certainly is in the command structure. But we built this in so that he would be there, but his main, the deputy chief's main responsibility would be fire prevention.
And you should know that this doesn't look much different than what our own organization is right now with the exception of the deputy chief. So this is something that is, has been working.
Pretty standard. I mean, it's pretty standard in the fire service. There's nothing really unique about this organizational chart. Sure.
Are most of the positions within the different groups full-time or some of those part-time? I was just curious about the breakdown versus, say, like on-call.
Right. So what we planned was, if we were to merge, was to add four additional full-time positions. So we have 10 now.
Oh, okay.
We have 10 full-time positions now. And the reason we have 10, we have, just to give you a little background on Halifax, we have three, we have four groups. Each group has two firefighters assigned to it and then we have two firefighters that are technically assigned to day spots.
Okay.
At night, we get to the third person by bringing in a member of the call department.
Okay.
In this model, we would have, what we're doing, we're doing the same thing. We're adding one more full-time person, but we're also adding a call spot.
Right.
So it's worked great to keep members of the call department engaged. They get to do shifts. They get to come in and familiarize their equipment. Before, we could go a month without a real need for the call department to come back and in that time, it's difficult, you know, things get moved around in the truck, they're just not putting their hands on things. So we built into this model additional time for call firefighters, A, because it's cost-effective, but B, because it gets them and keeps them more engaged in the firefighting. Any other questions on that? Good.
Yep. Thank you.
So we, as we met, we just wrote down a bunch of notes and we had a bunch of ideas and questions about how we, what we need to discuss and how we would consider, how we would go about moving forward with any type of shared service agreement. And, you know, most of the literature we've read is the governing officials meet with the fire chief, define their expectations. This was just a note from some other shared service mergers saying that typically the fire chief will focus on service where elected officials may focus on monetary issues, but both groups must agree and focus on acceptable outcomes to achieve the shared service objective. Municipal agreement discussion, we, I looked at a lot of different merger, how they run governance. And one of the ideas was that the Halifax board of selectmen would provide direct governance. However, there would be a joint policy advisory committee made up of a combination of Halifax and Plumpton selectmen who would review the operation annually and make recommendations to the fire department and the future of the service agreement. To do this, both towns do need to have a fire chief. Under our structure, we only have, it's one fire chief. So your town would need, Plumpton would need to designate the Halifax fire chief as their fire chief just to cover the legalities of enforcing rules and regulations and laws and ordinances. The joint operating budget structure would be, have to be developed and agreed upon. And for now, I thought was the capital budgets for both, for town stations would remain a responsibility of individual towns. So our thought was if we were to do a five-year intermunicipal agreement, Halifax would continue to own the Halifax fire station and our equipment and Plumpton would get, you know, own their fire station and equipment. However, we could come up with a list of recommendations of things that could be reduced and work out a future capital plan. If we can just back up to the map.
Yeah.
I, just to illustrate, both fire stations are in perfect spots right now in Halifax and Plumpton, but if we, five years from now, if we were to talk about this, I mean, there is a good possibility we could look at one station right on 58, almost on the town line. Both towns can get from their station, get to that spot now within two minutes. So even to the furthest points of our town, it would only be, it would have minimal impact and be able to provide the service out of one station. So it's just, that's the type of thing that we want to look at for the future and how to save money, basically. And as far as the equipment now, I think that we would come up with a list of capital items that we would need and some of that could include the station. We haven't had an opportunity, if you would like us to continue down and explore these things and vet them out, we could, one of the things we looked at was the state, your station. If it didn't have administrative offices, could it be upgraded with a fire alarm system, climate event system to make it a small substation that has living quarters that wouldn't necessarily need a trailer, but upgrading the fire alarm system and climate event system, just something to think of.
So then we're going to go forward to the last, last one?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed one.
Yeah. No, we need to go back to the, no, keep going. No, 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 all the way to the...
You want me to go first?
Yes, please. Yeah, right here. Okay.
So we just put together a, the committee put together a timeline of how they thought this could work. Basically, tonight, we're here to talk about shared services and maybe agree on an approach, outline the requirements for further analysis. And then sometimes, we know that your committee still has a lot of work to do. And part of that, I mean, I'd be more than happy to present this to your committees, to your committee individually, but developing funding plans, researching the capital needs, hashing out some of the legalities. I know we have some grant money that will help to do that. Public forums so that the residents and stakeholders all have input and a joint, at some point, as Kim had pointed out, it would be a good idea to join the fire study committees and do a series of joint presentations in both towns, public forums. So we thought somewhere spring to summer and then summer, fall, public forums to present the joint service, formal public forums to present the joint service model and then bring it to a special town meeting vote sometime in the fall.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
So it looks a little aggressive. That's, you know, obviously fluid. Don't panic when you look at those dates. Again, we've only met three times, so this is just sort of our, you know, we, we have done some diving of some numbers, you know, we've done some salary surveys, you know, there's a lot of work behind these that we've done that we're not quite ready to make a presentation on yet. So we've got some work to finish, but we just thought it would be important for us to just do an overview presentation and really take the pulse of, are we headed in the right direction? And I think have a basic group discussion about this intermunicipal agreement as opposed to starting off as a joint entity, which I think, you know, as you all know, we are now engaged in a regional dispatch center by contract. So we do that with an intermunicipal agreement. That's worked well for us. I know that Duxbury is looking at perhaps making that a regional thing. We're working with them on, you know, different options that we could have as a formula. But, so I think because this would be one of the first in the state, there's no real model. I know that we didn't present it today, but we've got some other examples of other states that have done similar things. But I think for baby steps, I think that having a set time so that if it doesn't work, you know, we part ways and if it works, as the chief said, then we make it a little bit more official. So, sure.
I know, just wanted to touch back upon some of the things Kim had said earlier. Under this, we, the fire department would look at this as one landmass area and a population of protect. That boundary when we erase, it would literally be erased. An incident in Plumpton is just as important as an incident in Halifax. You know, there would be no difference in how we respond to each community. Our standards would stay, one of the things that is important for us, our standards stay the way they are. We don't let anyone work at all unless they have firefighter 12 certification and at the very least are an EMT. We have aggressively done very well in funding our training budget, so we make sure that, you know, we cover all of the training that's required. So the standards that we, so the Halifax residents know, our standards that we've had in place now for some years would not, would not change.
Right. And that is not only, again, to protect the residents of the town of Halifax, but also the employees. Again, you know, we, we take the safety of our firefighters very seriously and we want to make sure that they are trained and able to do their job and that their brother or sister who's working beside them can also do their job to be able to protect them. So, and I, and I'm really excited about this potential training. And that's why I was checking to see if we had, had any response from you because I think that our chief came up with an excellent idea of using that money in order to engage in the call force even further by providing training for EMTs. I think that that's going to be key and I think you'll see that make a huge difference in the number of people who want to be part of a call system. And again, our experience is the call is what feeds our full-time department. And so you've got people who have, that we've gotten to know, we know how they do the job, we know their personality and we, and they have, they know our community. So when they become a full-time paramedic firefighter in our community, it's a, it's a comfortable transition. And so that is another thing that we're extremely proud of. Lenny, could you just come in? So Lenny is our member of, I'm sorry. Lenny is a member of our fire study committee and Lenny was kind enough to put together this presentation for us. I'm sorry you missed it, Lenny. He needs some more training. So I guess we can talk a little bit about the presentation and I know that the biggest question that we have is just really, once we decide that this is the way that we all want to go forward is how does that look on the, the model? How does the model look? So let's just have a discussion about the presentation.
So let me jump in with a few things. First of all, if Plumpton was to enter into anything, we want to be equal partners.
Yeah.
We don't want to have a feeling that Halifax is, you know...
Sure.
Now, my headset is that we would set up some sort of a joint entity because I'm not sure how our residents would feel about having Halifax showing up unless it was Plumpton-Halfax District something or other. Okay?
But your residents have a, a part of a dispatch for Duxbury. This would be the same model as the Duxbury.
Right. But I'm talking about the equipment that actually shows up.
Oh, okay.
Okay? With the firefighter, with a patch on their arm. We want to make it as if, if we would go forward to make this, that it's one team and it's not Halifax or Plumpton, it's a joint team.
You're suggesting going immediately to a district kind of?
At least looking through it, my initial reaction to this would be it looks like Halifax is taking over us and we're going to become the smaller part of it and I think...
No, that's not really...
Okay. So we need to talk that through.
Sure.
I mean, you had up there, chief, deputy chief Halifax, you know...
Well, because we would be providing the service at first.
Well, that was just where they would generally...
So that was location rather than...
Right.
Okay.
As far as the name, we haven't, our committee did kind of talk about that a little bit. I don't know how, if you're talking about just the name of the...
Come on down.
Sorry. I know it's a...
No, 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 no.
You should know that this is not a final. This is, we've met three times.
You've got the expertise. You, these guys have the expertise.
No, I don't think, I don't, I mean, if we were talking, we refer to most of this basically as with whom the actual employer of the employee is going to be employed by, that type of thing. The name of the organization is something certainly that can be discussed, the patches, what the vehicles look like, that type of thing. I'm not personally opposed to anything like that and I think, I understand what your point is and I don't know how my board feels about it, but that could be part of an intermunicipal agreement. This agency will be known as...
Yeah, and that's just the gloss on it. I mean, the real thing is that the people who are working this are a combination of Plumpton-Halfax people sharing equally.
Right.
Okay? Now, we understand we're the smaller town in terms of population, but, you know, even in terms of geography, but not that small.
No.
Three square miles difference there.
Yeah.
Yep.
You guys want?
Yeah, several things to say. To that point, you know, we have a pretty good model already, which is the Area 58 cable studio. And I think we've done a really good job of merging three towns and albeit Plumpton is by far the smallest. We totally feel like equal partners, so I'm a little less concerned. I mean, we don't want to give away the baby and we don't want to be the small people, but I kind of like this model. In the bigger sense, just so I can blurt out what's on my mind, you know, there really isn't much of a model for this yet and you hear all over the place, well, shared stuff doesn't work and merged stuff doesn't work. And honestly, that just, that just excites me that there's a challenge and I feel like we're smart enough to pull this together. The, I think the key here is absolutely recognizing that we're not going to save money and that the goal here is better service and the real goal, I mean, the biggest problem that you guys have said and our biggest problem is retaining staff. And that's the piece that drives everyone crazy and ends up leading to a dysfunctional environment. So, I mean, I think that's the piece. I very much like this model in terms of the baby steps and the incrementality of it and it gives us four years to get our act together. So I'm pretty excited. I mean, the devil's in the details and, you know, we could end up with a situation that we're not comfortable, but I'm really comfortable. We have a sort of a plan on how to move forward to see if this is mutually beneficial.
Right. So for our town, I just want to talk about the dispatch thing and I talked briefly about it when, our first meeting of our fire studies, that when we, we had our own dispatch center. Again, most states have these regional dispatch centers. In Massachusetts, it's not known for that. They have these individual PSAPs. And so when we were first doing a study about eight years ago, I participated in a study, I think there were 13 communities that got together to look at regionalization of dispatch. And it's really hard to give up that control and I totally understand that because I was, you know, dragged into the process a little bit. And then it didn't really work out. And then when Duxbury approached us last year, two years ago, we knew that we were having a hard time with retaining dispatchers and, you know, making sure that people were trained and we were nervous that we weren't going to be able to provide the right kind of service for our community. And so we did engage with Duxbury and we had such a confidence in them and their ability to provide that service that we weren't ready to do this regional agreement. We weren't ready to make it official. Are we comfortable now after a year and a half? Absolutely, we're comfortable with moving forward with that. But that's part of the baby step. And, you know, I know that these slides don't, you know, we don't have them come up with a name or whatever, but we needed to come up with a... a name or whatever, but we needed to come up with whether or not we could respond. Could we, could we respond to all of our residents? And again, there is no line in that map. So we are, we are, we are all one. And so a Plimpton call is the same importance as a Halifax call, and we couldn't look at ourselves in the mirror any, any day if we ever thought anything differently of that. And I want you to know that. We're not hearing, we're not here to kind of be the big guys taking over. We're not looking to take over. We're here to assist you, we are your neighbors. You asked us to look at it, and we are here to help you, and that's what we're doing. And so this, again, is three meetings in, we haven't completed it, but before we go further, we need to know where you are. Because we don't want to waste any time if you're not that interested.
And that, just the only thing I'd say, the dispatch is a perfect example. I mean, we joined that, I think it was four years ago, and there was concern of loss of control and loss of local knowledge and all of that. And we had ended up with such a better service out of it, and much better, exponentially better.
And it was seamless.
Absolutely seamless, yeah.
Chief, do you have a comment?
One of the things, we had the same, we were a little apprehensive when we went to Duxbury as well. And I think that that was one of the benefits of an intermunicipal agreement, is that you are able to spell out for your community exactly what you want in a legal document ahead of time. So if you want two paramedics in that station, if you want, you know, exactly, you can lay out exactly what you expect, what you want, and then actually the obligation falls on the other community, or in that case, the Duxbury dispatch center to provide that service. So I understand where you came from, but that's one of the benefits of an intermunicipal agreement. Just if we went right to a district.
Too much.
I'll give you a little, no, I'll give you some of my thoughts on a district. Like, a district becomes an independent taxing authority, where the board of selectmen really have no say, and the district can vote their own, members of the district can vote their own budget. And in some communities that I've looked at, they've really gotten, the fire department budget went from $2 million to $5 million almost overnight, because they can have a small pool of people voting on that budget. So there's some, financially, I think there should be more concerns with a district, because then the community has less say over what type of fire department they have versus an intermunicipal agreement, where it's exactly laid out what the expectations are of both communities.
Right. And so we, again, we had the confidence that Duxbury was going to provide a great service for us, because, you know, I know that the state police had done your dispatch for many years before Duxbury took it over, but we were used to having an individual dispatcher in our police station. So it was a large, it was probably our toughest decision. I know I can say, for myself sitting in this seat, it was the toughest decision I made as a selectman to, to provide, have Duxbury take over that, that particular service. But I can tell you that I don't have any questions of whether or not Duxbury takes their time answering our phone as opposed to the priority of their own 911 call. And now that Chief Nord has approached this group about two months ago, about looking at doing, not so much a district, but sort of a district, we have an opportunity, because as you all know, we are part of a regional school district, and we know what works for that us now in that agreement, and what doesn't. And so we have a unique opportunity that I know that the chief and I and Charlie sat down a few months ago and sort of came up with, we think would be a perfect agreement. To be fair, again, we're not, we are a nonprofit organization. We would not be providing a service thinking that we would be charging, you know, a town more money. That is not how we roll. It would be based on a certain formula so that everything is fair, that whatever price that you're paying, it's a real price, we're not making a profit. But certainly, on the flip side of that, we can't lose money either. So you have our commitment that we are not looking at, you know, starting a business at all. This is, again, not going to save anybody in this room any money. What it's going to do is provide a better service and a better firefighter. So that's our goal.
And the bottom line is if it doesn't work for both communities, it doesn't work.
Yeah.
It has to work for Plimpton too. And I have a particular affinity for Plimpton.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I would want to make sure it works for our folks and your folks. I certainly wouldn't be supportive of anything that I thought wouldn't do the job, at least on my end, me personally.
I personally think that the whole patch thing, having been on the police department working corrections for years, doesn't matter what the patch is, as long as somebody shows up at your door, saves your life, put the fire out. It's an ego thing when you talk about, I want to be recognized, patch, military, it's the same way. You have the Army and Navy and Marines, but they all work together. I'm from Chicago, Midwest. This is all they have is regional departments.
I'm familiar with Florida.
Right, the districts, yeah.
And so satellite offices near the end. It doesn't demean a person, because he's in a satellite office, still a firefighter, he's still a chief, still doing his job. Doesn't take anything away from them, what title of the stop station this is.
And this has been a really great, you know, opportunity for us to look at retention, and regardless of what happens, we're still going to continue on that train of retention, and how do we retain staff? And so we're committed to that, certainly. And, you know, who knows what's going to happen? This is a great exercise for us to go through too, and I think it's a good exercise for you. But at the end of the day, if we start holding public forums and we have an angry town of Halifax, certainly we're not going to move forward. But I have, I think that our, our residents, you know, when we did go full-time, we went for an override, and we were successful in that. And, you know, whenever we've gone to for equipment or anything, you know, we've got residents that's supportive and understand the importance of fire. And as long as we can say that you, your service can only improve, then I think that they would totally support it. But I don't know, we don't know until we start doing it. But, again, I don't want to start the public forums until we get the paperwork and we are confident in what we're.
We're all feeling good.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Because I don't want to have it and go, I don't know, well, I don't know. And we may have a series of them, because I think, you know, just like our fire study committee, we've got a diverse group. We've got finance people, we've got, you know, we have architect, we have planners, we have all these different people that really force us to do a better job and, and ask the tough questions of us. And I think that, you know, when we're done, we all learn something. Right, Tom?
You make me a better person.
Well, I like the model a lot. I think it makes a lot of sense. I think equality for our, the towns is going to be extremely important. So I don't know, I wasn't a big fan of Halifax being the governing body to this. I think that we'll have to come up with something different, maybe it's all six of us. But I think that it is going to be a, I mean, nobody knows what the future holds, but I think we need to explore this to the fullest extent. And if it works and the town's supportive, I think we need to embrace it, that it makes sense. It will be a, I think we'll have better trained departments, or a better trained department. I think it will improve the, the work life for the firefighters and EMTs that work for us, that they'll be challenged and, and fully trained, and that this will be an environment where they can thrive and really do well, and will help with retention. Feel good about what they're doing. And I think that integration is going to be really important, that, you know, they're going to all have to just work together, and not really the, the idea of teams where there would just be people from a certain area. I don't know if I'm a big fan of that, because I would want them to all be mixed together. And maybe mix things up every quarter or something, so you're working with new people, so that we are all on the same team, and not have any type of division. Because for this to be successful, we all have to work together and do the best job we possibly can.
Yeah, that's a great point.
So two, two things that I'd like to mention. We've had some recent issues with our fire department, and I think the thing that's come out of that, and it's certainly hurt tonight, is the degree to which fire departments run, hopefully, on a sense of pride and the job and excellence. And I love that we've heard that, and I think that's all the more fun of putting this together, is maybe some pride in the excellence if, if we do do a shared service. The one other thing I'd say is I think we have to be really thoughtful, because there's plenty of chances to create chasms that we can slip into. But I think the aggressive timeline, that timeline's pretty darn aggressive.
Yeah.
But I think we should continue with an aggressive timeline. This could easily languish, and we could get lost in the details, so I'm pushing hard on the accelerator, makes sense to me.
Yeah, we run in a marathon, we only have so much time to run that marathon. You know, people who ran it didn't know each other when they started, but at the end of the race, they were buddies.
Right.
It's possible to do those type of things.
Absolutely.
But definitely presents a lot of positive possibilities. To your point, your point, Ed Marks, we should at least go forward with this thing and see what we can develop, because the benefits, the potential benefits are considerable for all of us.
And if nothing else, if in fact, at the end of all these discussions, perhaps something positive will come out where you can reevaluate, you know, what you're doing with your department, bring it better face, we all win.
Right. Because in the end, we all work together.
Because we're basically tied together with mutual services as it is. And like I said before, anyone who calls across the line, you're going to respond to it, they're going to be happy to see that person. And I say, oh, you can't treat me because I'm from Plimpton or you're from Halifax. I don't think that's going to happen.
And you know Troy from being in public service, that, you know, for a firefighter or policeman, they don't even look at that kind of stuff. It's innate in them to want to, you know, react and help. So I think we can all feel confident in that. So, so what's the next step? Okay, well, I want to talk about this intermunicipal agreement as opposed to a district. Is everybody on board that we start with baby steps and, and we can deal with the particulars of the governing board and all those kinds of things afterwards? I know that we have examples, we weren't ready to really present that, but certainly it included Plimpton being equal in decision-making.
I'm more comfortable with intermunicipal agreement than a district at this point.
I think that makes the most sense.
I think it's worth exploring. The details are going to be?
Yeah.
What makes it, doesn't make it. Certainly in our MRI consultancy, you've seen that. We've got a whole bunch of questions that they raised, if we were to look at this. And I think we need to sit down and go through that. I think we need some sort of, I don't know how many of us have to be involved, certainly the fire people have to be involved, they got the expertise. But I'd really like to hear what their headset is in terms of, you know, the positives and negatives. And then see if, if they're just parochial, we can deal with that. If there's something that's substantial that we can't get to, then we'll have a different issue to deal with. I'm not, as far as whether we go municipal or district, I'm less concerned. Once we get into the details, it'll fall out.
Yes.
So I think that's where we want to go next.
Okay. And then the other thing that we need to talk about, not tonight, but I want you to think about, is the grant money that we receive from the state. And so I think it would be a great idea, you know, we're going to pursue this training thing, but certainly we're going to need to set aside some of the money to sort of help us with the legality of either it's an intermunicipal agreement or whether it's a district. But that's the part that, you know, I know that Tom from our committee brought up some great points about state law, and, you know, this is something that is new, certainly new. And we want to make sure that we're covering all our bases, and, you know, as much as we have experts in certain particular areas, you know, none of us have ever written anything like this. Like I said, we did a draft with, you know, an idea.
We both got lawyers, that's for sure.
Yeah. But I just think it would be great.
They're the only ones that win in this deal.
Yeah.
But I'm talking not just, you know, people who are familiar with fire departments. So I'm not talking about consultants for fire chiefs, I'm talking about past town managers like Bernie's group with Rocco Longo. I, I'm just thinking about somebody like that that has, you know, the MMA can assist us in that kind of resource of figuring out what's the proper thing. So I think that, I don't know how much money we set aside, but I just want to plant the seed that as we're looking at the amount of grant that we, we receive, that we are all aware that some of that should be used for the, the stuff that is.
Sure.
Yeah.
Now, my understanding is, we got 50,000, of which we're putting 20,000, you know, towards the MRI consultants. So we still have 30,000. One of the questions we probably will wrestle with is, do we need help, outside help?
Okay.
Okay. I don't know where your part of money is going.
Okay.
Part of it's going to training, I know.
Yeah, so part of it, Chief, can you help me with the number? We got 80,000?
Eighty-three thousand, probably. Only 5,000 of ours was set aside for legal fees. Talked to our town administrator, he seemed to think we could put something together, have it reviewed by an attorney, there wouldn't be that much money for that portion of it. We have 30,000, I believe, is set aside for training, 25,000 for radio system upgrades.
Yes.
If we were to do this, we want to make sure that we have a solid radio system. And the remainder was for transitional costs.
Which is patches.
New patches, new uniforms. That's why I said we could talk about, if we're talking about a name for a department, that's something we could certainly talk about. Transitioning employees in, however we do it, some of that money was set aside for that transitional cost.
Yeah. But we don't have a spreadsheet on it, so we're just sort of kind of back of the envelope.
Us too.
And I would say, I know that 5,000 for legal, but I almost want to put 5,000 for consultation to Chief. Like, you know, I just, I think this stuff, you know, the, the, we're setting up the groups and, you know, the, the management of the day-to-day is something that we can certainly do. But the part that I don't feel comfortable with is that agreement. And I know that we've done some kind of rough things with Duxbury on, and we're going to come back around with Duxbury to sit down and actually look at different models that we've come up with.
You had the 30,000 remaining, did you have ideas on how you were going to use that 30, whether it would be to review, partially to review a plan that we present and give Plimpton some guidance on that? Or whether it's to actually create, part of it to create the intermunicipal agreement? I don't know what those.
It was both. It was to create a, and help us negotiate a intermunicipal agreement, and to help with a cost analysis if it was necessary. Basically the next step. So we had the study, and then if we were to explore shared services, $30,000 to go to the next level, which is just continuing with the cost analysis, and then if that all looks good, to help us negotiate a intermunicipal agreement.
So I'm.
And write one.
I would just throw in, I don't know if it's the right moment, but as we're talking about consultants and lawyers, a little, bringing those guys in early, just proactively to sort of forewarn us so we don't spin our wheels for weeks and end up down and passing.
Something that's not going to work, right.
Yeah, my concern would be, first, I'd like to get down the weeds with, you know, how this was going to work, before we start passing stuff by legal, because I got a feeling it's going to change so often, and we'll be running up huge bills.
Yeah, no, I think that's true, but, but potentially going in and saying to legal, hey, look, we're starting this process, do you have anything to forewarn us about so that when we come back to you at the end?
Any pitfalls?
One of the things we, that at least I was thinking of, is taking part of the 30,000 and potentially having a consultant help us. So I don't know, we haven't talked about that, but I mentioned it, but, you know. Because I think this is going to be, this is a lot of work. This is taking two structures, you're further along than we are, thinking about how they're going to merge together, come out the other end with a five-year agreement.
Make it work.
Make it work, with all the issues that come in terms of people's career paths, residents' expectations, you know, this, this is a lot of work, and I think we're going to need a lot of help.
The main ingredient in this whole thing is whether or not these six people are going to be sitting around this table in five years from now, three years from now.
Well, I know one who isn't.
Just hanging around there.
Well, right, it has to work regardless of who's sitting at the table.
Yeah, we're doing.
Those are the things to look into, and make sure that we have places in that.
I think there's, there's opportunity with the training, I think there's opportunity for the career paths of people, which, good thing. I don't expect costs, we never went into this thinking costs would get out. If anything, it's how much will they go up? And that's something we're going to have to get and wrestle with. I'm not sure about the idea of having capital plans for each of the towns. Need to talk that through more. It would seem to me if you got operating costs merged, then potentially you need capital costs. And then how do you deal with that? How does town meeting deal with that? So all those issues we need to think about, work through. I'm not sure who the right people are to be in the room, because this is going to take a lot of time. We need to think about that.
Okay.
You need to think about that, I'm not sure if you have thoughts on that, you know, anytime you get more than seven people, it starts to get into a debating society, so.
Well, our fire study committee, I think there's five of us, so it's, it's a little smaller. So, you have two different tracks, so you have a technical track and you have an oversight track.
Correct.
Which track is going to be exploring the financial impact?
The municipality, the oversight is really to deal with the, looking at the municipality agreement, of how shared services, whatever that is, and the financial impact on the town.
Okay, so who's going to do the modeling for the budgets?
We have a lady, Catherine Shepherd, who's on the finance committee, who's a CPA, who she volunteered to do.
So, of the, so she's on the oversight committee?
Yes.
Okay.
We also have another lady on the technical committee that's very analytical, so we're hoping, you know, to me, first, we have to get through the technical, a couple of meetings.
Okay.
To see, what priorities do we have to address? We, Plumpton, whether we go with you or not.
Okay.
And then we start to talk about those priorities, how would we solve them as a mutual, does it make sense?
Okay.
And the costs will come out, and we have the people from our side that can help it, you know.
All right.
And we're not, you know, my background is Bentley College, accounting, finance, 25 years, business analysis, so I don't feel uncomfortable being put in that role.
Sure, I'm sure. So where we're at, is we were at the, you know, I think in our next meeting, we were going to dive deeper into the finances, as I said, we started to sort of explore, we've, we've done some salary surveys so that we can get a sense of, you know, what the different rates of pay, you can see that we've done a preliminary, you know, how we would staff it, so we're going to come down to a cost, but it's not just salary costs we have to think about, we have to think about retirement.
Sure.
Health insurance, all those kinds of things. So, there's, you know, we, we're going to have a little time to do that kind of financial modeling. And then, I think the next step was really about the intermunicipal agreement, but I think that.
Governance, the intermunicipal agreement.
Yeah, yeah, that's the stuff that, you know, as I said, none of this is super stinky, but at least we've got the operational side, like, we feel pretty confident in, in that, right now, that model. So, and then, the other things we need to think about is, you know, I know that, I keep going back to training, because it's really been something that we're very serious about here, and I know that it would make sense, I think, Chief, did you talk about going into Cisco and having some training?
So, and the money, the money was designated to bring both departments up, train departments on what they might lack right now. So, we don't have, necessarily have a lot of familiarity with Cisco, that's why I said, maybe that would be a good starting point, it'd be a minimal amount of money, it would introduce the Halifax people to even see what the facility's all about, but at the same time, I'm sure, you know, you have as much turnover as we do, your guys could also benefit by going back into that facility and then have a hazmat, we have, maybe use the Plumpton County Fire Rescue Training Association to bring a hazmat expert to do a hazmat class on the chemicals that are at Cisco. So, that was an idea that I had, I reached out, I said, if Plumpton has similar ideas, we're open to any type of joint training that you want to have.
I don't know what the timeline should be on, I don't know if we should wait on that until?
I like the idea of joint training, I think we, Plumpton, have to make sure, we've got our act together in terms of Cisco and Hubble, because this is going to take a while. If, if it makes sense that we have a, a joint class, but I don't want to get confused about who's.
No, no.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 it would just be, it would still be our own entity.
Yeah.
It's just a way that, like, we don't want to lose this grant money, no matter what happens, so.
Sure, we don't need it.
It's an opportunity.
So, if we have an opportunity to have a hazmat class and just kind of incorporate that, because it is a target hazard in your community, it made sense to me, because that's kind of the way the grant was written. So, I, the training each town and?
Yeah, we should take advantage of their money, sure.
Well, that makes sense to this town too, in case we came in on a mutual aid, because having been familiar with Cisco, it is quite, quite the project, and very much behoove everybody to have as much time in there as they possibly can.
So, would you like to do a drafting, we don't, we have, you know, most of Halifax has its hydro area, so some of, the Halifax ideas was Cisco, big target hazard, drafting, we don't do a lot of drafting in Halifax, to bring our guys up to speed in drafting operations, and then the same thing, we reached out and said, what, what do you, what is existing Plumpton, this is just working together as?
So, what was your timeframe, Chief?
I had said we could do it first week of May, second week of May, we, we're, I mean, we do monthly trainings, so.
Is Rick in?
Yeah, Rick's right with me.
What do you think, Rick?
What are we doing?
I got everything except the drafting.
So, we're basically just set up a joint training between both departments, do a walk through the facility, identify some of the hazards in the facility, and then come back to, either if you have a conference room, or if we do it at one of the fire stations, and then have a hazmat tech do a class on the hazards that we have there, these are the chemicals, here's how we should be responding to them, that type of thing, just to bring both departments up to speed. It's not, it's obviously, it's in Plumpton, they have a target hazard, but we respond in a mutual aid as well, so that was an idea that we had.
Because regardless of anything happens.
Yeah.
Right.
We're all right with that, right Phil?
And on, on the other hand, it's one of the best PR things that we can use, if we decide to go forward with this, if the people of both of Plumpton and Halifax, citizens know that we're trying to work together and doing training, doing things of our nature, it makes it a lot easier, you know, to sell it in the end, if we just.
We'd be happy to host like, in our town, we'd be happy to host an aerial ladder class. You don't have one, but it doesn't necessarily mean that tomorrow, if we have a structured fire on mutual aid, that your personnel will be.
Up in the air.
On a ladder, or, you know, using each other's equipment, so that's another idea that we have that.
So, I think we're on board, we should move forward.
Absolutely, with training, definitely.
Yeah.
I fully agree. Because regardless of what happens with this, whether we merge or not, I mean, we are, as I said earlier, we're sister communities, and we're here to assist each other, and, you know, we only get better with those kinds of training initiatives, so.
How is the training going to be coordinated?
So, I called Phil, just said, give me a couple of dates, and you put it out to your department, get me a number of how many people want to go, like, right now, we have plenty of money, so whoever wants to go could go. I'll do the same in Halifax, I talked to our town accountant, we felt that the best way would be for you to send us over a bill, correct, with a lump sum, with the employee costs broken down, and we would reimburse part of the grant.
So, you should be in charge, because you got the money, and we'll bill you, like you say, that, that would work.
That's what we do, yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Question on, who would employ all of the firefighters and EMTs?
I recommend.
Well, if it was an intermunicipal agreement, it would be the town of Halifax.
Okay, so then, we would be assessed similarly to what we have with Silver Lake?
Yes, but we?
It'd be more like a contract.
But you wouldn't stick it to us.
Yes, it would be, we're not going to stick it to us. See, that's the thing, because.
Does anyone allow us?
No, no, that's, you can count on that, because we have something too, and we don't, we don't want it.
You want to smile on this?
We don't want it.
Your own camera.
I will keep saying, we are nonprofit.
Okay.
Okay, but at the same time, we can't take a law, so we have.
I thought we'd be putting a budget together.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll allow.
You know, you see the Halifax breakout.
Yeah.
So, everybody would have the same benefit package?
Yes.
Salary raise?
Yes.
You know, believe it or not, it's a whole thing, but one of the things that's been, one thing that's been important to a lot of the firefighters that have left Plumpton to come to Halifax, is just because they want to be part of the union. I mean, being part of the union is a big thing for career firefighters, and that, that would, so every, you know, your career, the four additional people we put on, obviously, would come over and that, that would be another part of it, but the, the benefit package would be the same, the, you know, payroll would be the same, it would all, technically, there would be Halifax and employees under our model, and we would break down the cost of what, you know, what each employee was, and we would, or what the whole department was, and we talk, we're still trying to figure out how to come up with them, because there's not, like Kim said, there's not a lot of departments that have done it yet, but how to come up with a funding formula, basically like we have in Duxbury for our, for our agreement there, that agreement was call volume, and?
Yeah.
It had, it had some other factors in it, but they could be a multiple call, multiple funding formulas, we just want to make sure we come up with one that's favorable.
And we're a little ahead of you in the fire study portion, you know, we're exploring that, but that doesn't mean when we come joint, that's not something that we all talk about, like, it's just not going to be Halifax saying, this is the way it is, we're going to come as a joint group saying, this is the research we've done, and this is the formula that we think may work. And, you know, when we talk about salary survey, I want you to understand what we're doing with that. So, it's been a practice of our community to do a comparison on not just population or like budget size, but we also do a comparison of per capita income, you know, commercial versus residential split, so we try to get as liked communities as we are in order to compare the salaries. We recognize that we are not Pembroke, we are not Kingston, we do not have a commercial base, as you don't, to be able to support those kinds of salaries, but we can get pretty close. So, the combination of the population, so what we're doing, and the fire chief and the committee's got together some of the contracts, and we're sort of exploring the communities that we've come up with, that Charlie has helped us with, that as we are combined, you know, as this 10,000 resident entity, you know, and your commercial base and ours, so we're comparing it to those towns, so those are the contracts that we got, that's what we're vetting. We also have an intern from Bridgewater State University, who's going to be working with our wage and personnel board, and is going to be assisting our fire study committee with that kind of research, to look at the contracts and kind of vet out everything. So, those are the things that when we get closer to, as we come a joint committee, and I think, like, right now, you have the technical and your oversight, I would assume that your oversight would merge with our committee.
I think so.
And that's where we would really start working out, this is the formula. So, we're not coming to you saying, this is the way it is, like, everybody has a voice, and I, I don't want you to think that for a second, I know I'm starting the presentation, but, you know, this is because we're just a little ahead, that's all.
Okay.
So.
I have a question, and I lost it.
Old age.
Oh, wow, no.
No, but I think it's important, so, oh, I have a question, actually, so I understand that this is a pretty aggressive schedule, and I understand that. So, tell me, what were you, before you even looked at, I recognize this is a little aggressive for you, but before you even looked at that, what were you thinking about a timeline?
Not that aggressive, for sure.
Okay.
Number one, I don't like special town meetings, okay? So, I was almost thinking a year from now.
Okay.
But on the other hand, we got to get there, and we got to get this going, and we're in a position where we're looking at our whole department anyways, because we have to make a decision on a number of things. We ruled out privatization, it's just too expensive, so we either have the municipal agreement, or we have what we have now, where we have to start staffing better, and retain better, and train better, which means dollars go up, or maybe there's something in between. It just seems to me, having something ready by the summer fall is just way too aggressive.
Okay.
But let's go, let's try, yeah.
If we don't set a target, we.
Yeah.
That will never mean anything.
Right, I'm fine with shooting for it.
Okay.
I just don't want to make it a cast in stone.
Oh, yeah, no, we're not going to, yeah, we're not going to show up at your door going, um, what time is it, are you ready? We're not going to do that, but.
No, we'll call first.
Troy might call, I might just be not going to.
Oh, but certainly, my hope would be that at most, in six months, we have a really strong idea, whether this is going to work or not. If it's not going to work, we got a lot of work to do, and want to get on with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one last thing that I've been, I've been thinking about during this whole meeting, is that if, in fact, we do have an intermunicipal agreement, does that open up the door for more grants and more money from the feds and the state to come in to maybe help your situation?
You know, if we became a unique model, I would think there would be people looking at us, saying, how can we help you?
Right, I think, I think you're absolutely right, I think that, you know, when we look at, I'm going to bring up the dispatch thing again, just because it's something that we just finished, you know, certainly, I, you have a benefit of that, because right now, your grant money is paying, you know, state police used to do your dispatch, and now your grant money is being used to pay Duxbury to do your dispatch, so you've had really no financial impact on having Duxbury. I would suspect that that may change.
This year is.
Yes, 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 you're going to have, yeah.
But we help them by becoming.
Yes, you did.
So, they got grants.
You're absolutely helpful, because by you being there first, you know.
So, we're not going to sign the bill yet.
No, no, no.
So, we're already, we're already ahead, because we have the agreement with Comcast, that we're all involved.
Yep, no, I.
Not saying we're in the bed together, but we're close.
But when we look at.
And we do want to be a sister community, I mean, I think for a while, the departments kind of, it used to be very close, kind of went away a little, now we want to push it back, whatever that means.
Well, these two communities probably have more in common than most communities that up under each other. I mean, historically.
Well, I'm still not over that you took most of our land, so.
We're going to have to move on to that. But when we talk about grants, money for dispatches.
You've thought about the Native Americans.
You know, we've got, you know, a source of the state, eventually it may go away, but, you know, we, we feel that the state has been proactive about looking at communities and rewarding them for, you know, doing some kind of regionalizations, because again, we recognize as old Yankees that we're used to doing it on our own, and we have a certain territorialness about us, I must say, and so, again, that was a really hard decision for all of us to make, to give up that dispatch, and, you know, it's been a pretty positive thing.
Wasn't for me.
No, I know.
And for, for that grant money, we can make such a cogent case for two small towns of moderate means that are able to do something efficiently.
Because it costs you the same for your 2,000 residents as it does cost us for our 7,500 residents, but if you're just doing two on, like, we now, we're at three, so it costs us a little bit more, and, so, you know, that's what it hurts your community, because you don't have a lot of commercial base, so like us, you know, the, the burden of the tax bill falls on our residents and not so much on the commercial, so we are really mindful of that for our residents, so that we're constantly looking at ways to save the money, again, this may not save the money, but it will bring them a benefit.
It might stabilize it.
It may stabilize, where dispatch saved about $200,000 a year for our community, so it was, it was a good choice for us to do too. So, I, would you want to set another date for getting together?
Let's, I think that we need to.
Do you have any more questions, so I don't want to rush it?
No, no, I think this was very good, it gave, got us talking, and got something that we can go throw arrows at and see how we do.
Yeah, I mean, your.
You're going to give us copies of these, right? You'll send it to us?
Oh, absolutely, I'll, I'll have it.
No, no.
Are you going to charge them?
It'd be 50 bucks. 50 dollars.
Bill rejected.
Yeah, well, our town accountant, I didn't get a chance to point out.
So, it's 50 bucks, if we give 45, would it?
Yeah.
We also extend, you know, if anybody wants to come to our fire studies and be in the audience and listen to us, you're more than welcome, we'd love to be able to come to some of yours.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
So, that we can keep, you know, we're not going to interrupt you, we'll sit quietly and, you know.
Well, maybe by, after you have a couple of meetings with fire study, you guys are probably going to want to get together, the two fire study groups, maybe by the end of the summer, I mean, I don't know how much time you think it's going to take you to get some posting done on your end, and?
Well, it's probably well into June, we got a town meeting coming up, so, you know.
But maybe if we get together, we want to get together in August?
Somewhere in June, yeah.
Yeah.
For sure.
Definitely, we should meet June.
Let's set up a meeting in.
Not that we all need any more meetings, but this is going to be the fruitful way of keeping us. of keeping us.
So, how many of you like to fish, we can meet on the lake.
Can you eat the fish?
That's not part of it, catching them is the thrill.
Oh, okay.
Do you want?
No, I wouldn't think so.
So, what days are work for you? Are Wednesdays good for you or, I know Mondays are your meeting, Tuesdays are our meeting, so.
Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesdays are good.
For me, the last Wednesday of every month, I've got Old Colony Planning Council.
Do you want to do Thursdays, like?
No, I can do Wednesday, but I just can't do the last Wednesday.
I know you guys like a six o'clock start, like, is that okay?
I'm good.
Okay.
I have no problem with it.
Okay. Okay, so what date do you want to meet? I'll leave it up to you, Mr. Russo.
The 20th?
June 20th.
Maybe it becomes the third Wednesday of each month.
Sure.
We could do that, yeah.
Just to keep the thing moving and.
Okay, we talk about progress and things that we.
Nothing but progress.
Right, exactly. Okay, so six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
So, do you want to meet here, you want to go back and forth?
It's up to you if you want us to go to, on a field trip to your.
I don't mind traveling.
You guys got the toll booth down now.
I know, I know. All right, well, yeah, we could come here, why don't we come here on six o'clock on 6:20?
Okay.
Okay, in this meeting room?
Yes, please.
All right.
Charlie, does it make sense to be upstairs since there's so many people?
It's 20:20.
Yeah.
I'm June.
I'm June.
I think the great hall would be more comfortable for everybody.
Well, I suspect so, we need to make sure.
It was taken tonight or else.
Uh, we're good, give me the six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
In upstairs?
Yes.
Okay.
Who's bringing the donuts?
You.
It's too late in the day, right?
Indeed, yeah.
I'll do what's up. I know. Is there anything else you can think of that?
No, I really want to just take this all in, you know, I think this has been great.
Yeah, love an email of the presentation.
Okay, yeah.
Wow, Professor, I didn't realize that.
So, I think that one, moving forward, before our committee meets again, it would be helpful if you could provide us with some feedback, whether it be concerns just on this presentation, so that's something we could look at at one of our next meetings if you just want to shoot Kim or I an email. And then the other question I had is, as we delve deeper into this, I had mentioned, like, it would be important to look at the station and say, here's our projection of what we would need to make this, you know, under the agreement, we talked about it, we would specify what apparatus or station improvements could or possibly be done, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't stepping on anyone's toes and looking at that type of stuff, or if you wanted to have your own committee do it, or, you know, we're willing to do it, we just don't want to step on any toes in the process.
Well, we need a meeting among ourselves to talk this through and, you know, see where they, where we're all at. And then we'll come back, understand what you want, so, sure.
I'd love to get the trailer out of there.
Absolutely.
But I don't know.
We want it over here.
The building. Over here, bro.
You're going to write that in the agreement?
Yeah, we don't want you to know.
I hate that trailer.
I know you hate that trailer.
Just moving down the long con, we have a fishing shack.
There you go.
It's okay, we might need it for our renovation project for the elementary school, so.
All right, so you guys are going to coordinate with Rick about doing some training at Cisco, some joint training, and then we were going to do something at the academy too, weren't we?
Right, so waiting to get some numbers back as to how many people you have that need the firefighter one and two training.
Okay, who's going to provide that to you, Chief? Is Liz providing that to you?
I mean, the Liz or Phil.
Liz and Phil, I think we're together on that.
We have a Liz and Phil.
Yeah, how many people are going to need, you want to put money aside for that firefighter one and two training?
Where are you going to do that?
Well, that's the question, I don't know how many people, so if it's.
I had requested the roster and then I think you were working on getting me the certificates by tomorrow.
Yeah, I got them on my pro today. But my understanding was that sometimes it's up.
Duxbury.
Oh, it's Duxbury, oh, okay.
Well, Duxbury, Duxbury runs a program that starts every September.
Okay.
So, whether, I talked to them about running a special program, depends how many people hit, their concern was the Plumuff County Training Association was that they might not be able to get instructors to come out in July and August because everyone's on vacation anyway, so it's very difficult for them. Like I said, the Liz and Phil, no matter what, we can set that amount of money aside once we have a number of how many people actually need, need that. There's other options such as they run a program out of Fall River, they run a program out of Stowe, but we don't, I don't think.
That's a long ways, yeah.
They're going to go there. Duxbury is a viable option, I talked to Chief North, he said if we have enough people, he could run it here in Halifax or Plum, do classes in Plimpton, but then they just can't do it for four.
Well, the Fall River one is something to look at also because they don't charge us.
Yeah, they don't charge for the train, the actual fee for the training, right.
Okay, we'll get back to you this week.
But we have to, do we, are we paying a salary for training or no?
Well, we don't generally, so we, what we do is we sponsor people for the program, so we provide the, we pay the fee to Duxbury and we say, you know, if you want to be part of our organization, you need to have X, Y, and Z, and we're going to pay for your tuition, provide you with turnout gear and all the things that you need to go, and we cover.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
And they got to sign a contract that they're going to stay at least three years.
We haven't done it.
Good luck with that one, yeah.
I've just got one question to ask Rick, you know, you got Cisco, is Poncho part of that deal too?
Even the boss.
Since a lot of people in the room don't know what that means.
I do.
Cisco get it, Poncho.
Poncho, yeah.
We have questions from the audience?
I'll give you one.
Okay, good to go, thank you.
Thank you for knocking on our door. Well, I didn't do a thing, I just sort of.
Thank you.
Hang on to the coattails.
Putting this together. Yeah, greatly appreciated, yeah, thank you, very much.
No, I think, I think, having worked in organizations like that where they have mutual service and, you know, one regional office.
We don't have one.
It works, but the people have to set aside their egos.
Right.
Yeah.
Melinda, before you leave, can we make a date?
And we need to vote.
Your husband know you're dating women?
Yeah.
Drive safely because we do give tickets in this town.
We need to vote on this, but.
Yeah, so I'm going to make the motion that we accept all the articles as we recommend it.
Yeah. All of it?
All right.
Wow.